Thank you very much. Call to order, uh, city of North Bend, Washington City Council meeting for December 7th, 2021. Um, we have a large agenda tonight. Would the clerk please confirm the role?
All council members at present, your honor.
Thank you. Before we do. Before we move to the consent agenda. Uh, I believe we have a proposed change to the agenda, Mr. Godell.
Yes, thank you. I would like to remove the, uh, uh, AB 21 dash 146 motion, authorizing, uh. Is it the, it was a fiscal?
That's 147.
Oh, 147. I'm sorry, AB 21 dash 147, sorry about that. Authorizing fiscal impact study. In the FN, the A committee, it was determined that the scope of the study in current language does not reflect the council's position as written and will be remanded to a work study.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No comment on that.
Sorry?
No comments on that?
You want to make a comment on that?
I, I would prefer to.
Okay.
So I, I mean, I guess, uh, to me this, I was really hoping this was going to come forward and actually be, be voted down today. Um, to me, this is just, uh, I struggle with this. This is either, uh, willful misconduct or gross negligence. And assuming that it's gross negligence, which is, which is, I hate to say a half full situation here, uh. This is, this is pretty bad and doesn't reflect any of the desires or direction from the council. And, uh, taking the, the staff's word for this, this was a misrepresentation by the, um, consultants. Uh, now I struggle that we're going to rework this contract and this wording and stick with these consultants. I mean, to me, this is, this is, this is troubling. Um, I, I just, this whole thing is, is, is quite baffling to me. How, how we've gotten to this point and, um, so I'm, I'm voting no at, at sending this back to committee because I just feel like this is, this is, this should be done and over right now.
Mr. Garcia, did you want to make your comments before we voted? Normally we have an opportunity to speak before, therefore do you want to see this come forward tonight? Can't hear you.
You muted yourself, Chris.
I don't know if anybody's going to make a motion to, to kill this thing, but I don't even know what the proper, proper terminology for that would be. But like I said, I mean, to me, this is, this is just about as bad as it gets right here.
Well, I'm with you, Chris, exactly the same way, and it reflects badly, so vastly badly on all of us, and it was not our, uh, any decision on our part, by the way. So I'm, I'm with you. I'll support you in this.
Well, then I say that this, um, I mean, we didn't kind of-
We just voted on a motion, folks. Did the motion not carry?
Motion did carry.
The motion's carried.
Then that's it.
You are correct. We did not, uh, make room for comment ahead of time. I apologize for that.
Yeah. That, that's, yeah, that's what I'm referencing. We, Ms. Garcia had comments that should have been addressed before we voted.
I get it.
Is this something I should withdraw the motion?
Oh, yeah. I guess I'll turn to my parliamentarian, but my, 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 uh, um, uh, Robert's rule says we did have a proper motion and a second and took a vote and it's done. And all I can do is apologize for not, uh, asking for comment. I didn't anticipate comment on simply removing an item from the agenda. At the council's request.
So in pure parliamentary terms, the mayor's correct. There's a, a, a technical motion for reconsideration that could be made at the next regular meeting. But there's also a motion that council could make tonight to move to suspend your rules and effectively, uh, withdraw, if you will, the prior action and go ahead and take this up on the agenda. But you'd have to make a motion to suspend the rules, have a second and have that pass.
I'll, I'll just urge that my fellow council members just keep an eye on this thing. Cause like I said, I mean, if, if this consultant truly made this big of a blunder and giving everybody the benefit of the doubt, how are we going to choose to move forward? Uh, with this company that just, the damage is done, right? I mean, it's to me, this is, this is about as bad of a black eye as, as it gets. And it does not reflect what was presented to us or our desires for this community. So I'll just, that's what I'll say.
Thank you. Uh, with that, item number 19 is removed from the agenda. With that, we'll move on consent agenda. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
The second, uh, motion by Mr. Godell, second by Ms. Miller. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries and it is unanimous. Citizens comments. Um, this is your opportunity at this time to comment on any items not on tonight's agenda, keeping in mind item 19's been removed. And if you would like to do so, please indicate in the chat box or by star nine. If you are on your phone, you will be called upon. Please start with your name and address for the record and you will have up to three minutes.
Mike Thomas, please unmute yourself and you have three minutes.
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, Michael Thomas, uh, 1231 La Forest Drive, um, SE. Um, good evening, uh, council members and mayor. Um, I wish to take note of consent item, agenda item which you just improve, approved. Um, myself and others continue to monitor water. And, uh, for the benefit of the public that may be attending, um, your item to study changing the cascade golf course water right to drinking water has caught my attention as a shift in the water system plan, a major change. As we all know, um, it was vital that North Bend add mitigation sources for the plan that was just approved. Uh, this is also a very expensive item. It's another $250,000 in the study expenditure on top of the $400,000 net cost to purchase the Cascade Golf Course and hundreds of thousands of dollars in expenditure for studies related to, to using it as mitigation water. Uh, I'm very concerned, uh, you know, about this, that, you know, the water system plan seems to be, uh, not worth the paper it's printed on. Or maybe it doesn't hold water. I'm also concerned about the execution of the water system plan. There's no contract with Salal. I've yet to see, you know, any credible plan that says that there's a sufficient quantity of water there. And also I, I take no issue with the mayor's characterization of the project at Hobo Springs as completed. I recently received a large amount of material from Seattle Public Utilities. For the public's benefit, this is a pilot project. It is not proven. There are also several problems with the city study that, uh, that was used to justify this. It did not include data from 2015. There's a significant amount of telemetry data missing from the city's, um, analysis. Only a small fraction of data from 2017 to 2020 was available to assess the impact of Hobo Springs improvements. There are additional items needed to, uh, add additional pumping capacity at the, at the lower, at the lower capture point. I don't believe this is a credible amount of water. And just to remind everyone, 20% more of nothing is still nothing. So I'm really concerned the city has nothing to show for its water sys, for, for, for the plan and for its improvements. It's very troubling as we continue to go forward, uh, with, uh, with more development. And I'm just concerned about this. And it troubles me and for the Cascade, uh, project to tender into drinking water. There'll be additional expenditure to, to actually realize that through engineering. Thank you very much, and I will have further comment later. Bye bye.
Thank you.
There is no one else in the chat box here.
Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on, uh, next item on tonight's agenda, item number 14, AB 21 dash 142, reappointments to the Park Commission. And it's my pleasure to be responsible for this item tonight. I'll try and make it brief on the, on the formal part, but, uh, per, uh, NBMC 2.24020, the Parks Commission shall consist of seven members. And I'll go on beyond that and in their scope of work and in, uh, interest in the parks, recreation and beautification is evidenced by their training, interest, experience or actions. Majority of the members shall be city residents. Provided that the appointed incumbent moving outside the city may continue to be a member until their term expires. Three members may reside outside of the city limits and within the district designated in this chapter. Current terms on the Parks Recreation and Beautification Commission for positions one, two, three and four expire on December 31st of this year. Mark Carrera, position one, Kyle Braun, position two, Eric Thompson, position three, and Tim Talavich, position four, have all generously offered their time for another appointment to the Parks Recreation and Beautification Commission. It is my recommendation that council approve that action. Uh, I would invite a motion. If any of those members are here, please let us know in the chat box. And if council has question for you or you'd like to make any comment, I'll call upon you.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve AB 21 dash 142, confirming the reappointments of Mark Carrera to position one, Kyle Braun to position two, Eric Thompson to position three, and Tim Talavich's position four on the Parks Commission. Terms expiring December 31st, 2025.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Garcia, second by Mr. Loudonback. Any further discussion? Mr. Garcia?
Yeah, I just, again, thank you very much for these, uh, four people willing to put in the time and energy to make North Bend a better place to live. Uh, truly appreciate your efforts, your time, your caring for this community, and we thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Godell?
Yeah, I'd like to, to further say thank you for stepping up. I started out in the planning commission in these committee meetings. It's a lot of work and a lot of passion coming from our citizens. And I do appreciate the amount of effort that they do and I want to personally thank them for stepping up. It is something that's important for the city and I appreciate their time.
Thank you. Mr. Loudonback, were you motioning?
Yeah, just that the, the Parks Commission is one of the, one of the things that I think we really have come to appreciate here in the city of North Bend. We are blessed by having, uh, a great deal of natural resources and, uh, our Parks Department has been able to, uh, help us co-mingle the, uh, the proactive and the passive parks areas that we have. And North Bend is, uh, growing and evolving. And parks have to be a key part of that. And so this committee in particular, uh, this commission is, is essential to us moving forward. And I want to thank the candidates for agreeing to serve once again. And you're doing a fantastic job and we, uh, we all appreciate it. We probably don't say it enough. We all appreciate your hard work.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, the motion before you is to approve AB 21 dash 142, confirming the reappointments of Mark Carrera to position number one, Kyle Braun, position number two, Eric Thompson, position number three, and Tim Talavich to position number four on the Parks Commission, terms expiring December 31st, 2025. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is item number 15, AB 21 dash 143, selection of the 2022 Mayor Pro-Town. Mayor Pro-Town Garcia.
Uh, yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve AB 21 dash 143, confirming Jonathan Rosen as the 2022 Mayor Pro-Town.
Second.
Uh, motion by Mr. Garcia, second by Mr. Godell. Mr. Garcia?
Well, I mean, it's his turn.
That's an endorsement.
There's an endorsement. I haven't if I ever heard one. Mr. Godell, anything you'd like to add to that rousing endorsement?
I'm not sure I can add much more. I thought that was well appropriated. Uh, no, Jonathan's been part of this council. Um, he's one that reads his packet, knows what's going on and, uh, I look forward to him becoming, uh, the Mayor Pro-Town. Uh, he's got some big shoes to follow in Chris's, uh, position. And again, my feet are off the ground.
Come on, get it up there, Chris.
I can't get my foot up high enough, damn it.
Uh, yeah, anyone else care to comment other than Mr. Rosen?
Congratulations, Jonathan. Uh, are we going to hear some of these meetings out of 32,000 feet in the future?
Not legally.
Good answer. Congrats. Looking forward to, uh, next year with you helping out for sure.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Last chance to take a good shot at him now.
That doesn't mean next year we can't take shots. That's, that's, yeah, come on.
Absolutely. Okay, m- mister, it's your turn. Motion to approve AB 21 dash 143, confirming Jonathan Rosen as the 2022 Mayor Pro-Town. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Jonathan, I thought for sure you'd be against this one. Our motion passes. It is unanimous. Thank you. I appreciate it. Looking forward to working with you on that. You do have amazing shoes to fill. Chris has been a wonderful pro tem for me this year. All right. Thank you so much. Uh, let's see if I can get back to my agenda home and next on our agenda. Item number 16, AB 21 dash 144. This is a final reading ordinance amending North Bend Municipal Code 18 dot 10 dot 050 regarding ho- hotel performance standards. Mr. McCarthy?
Thank you, your honor. So I'm keeping this introduction very brief since it has been already to the council for a first reading passed at the November 16th meeting. So these are amendments to the hotel and motel land use performance standards. Those are in North Bend Municipal Code 18 10 050. And these amendments are intended to enable the construction of a hotel in the interchange commercial zone. Um, without those amendments, particularly given the existing 35 foot height limit that applies within that zone. Um, a hotel may not be feasible as a, a use. Uh, these amendments have been recommended by, or approval by the planning commission following a public hearing. Uh, the council has the record of the public hearing. They have all the comments that were received and, and additional comments received following the hearing have been provided to council. The Community and Economic Development Committee reviewed and provided some recommendations to the amendments, uh, following the planning commission's review and recommendation. And those principally were in, um, relating to limiting the building height to a total, a total of 65 feet, addressing tree protection and some landscaping within the right of way of Bendigo Boulevard and some other minor edits. So subject to those revisions, the Community and Economic Development Council Committee recommended approval. City staff support the amendments as recommended by the CED committee. Those are, these amendments are consistent with our comprehensive plan, uh, purposes and of the interchange commercial zone, and they support the development of a much needed use within the city, which might not otherwise be able to occur. So I will turn it back to the council for any questions.
Thank you. And I'll just ask if council has any clarifying question or stick strictly to clarifying question for Mr. McCarthy before we turn to any final public comment. Um, Ms. Corwin?
Um, there's two sets of trees. One is along Bendigo Boulevard, and then there's a fence, a chain link fence and trees behind that. Are we going to be able to maintain both layers of trees?
So the trees that are within the right of way are, um, addressed by the performance standard. Trees that are behind that line of the right of way are, um, also addressed by that, uh, standard in the context of it being a required, uh, part of the submittal for the right of way frontage plan, which is required through performance standards. And in addition, there's buffering requirements between the right of way and any additional parking or driveline and, um, retaining trees is a part of the landscape requirements, uh, for that, subject to our tree retention requirements.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none. Uh, open to members of the public. If you would like to comment on this agenda item, please indicate in the chat box or by star nine, if you are on your phone. And we will call upon you. You'll have up to three minutes, uh, to give comment, starting with your name and address for the record.
Mike Thomas, you have three minutes. Please unmute yourself.
Evening, Mike Thomas, um, 1231 La Forest Drive, SE. I note the host has barred my recording of the meeting. I request as a participant to record the meeting by using the Zoom record function. Host, I request that you enable my permission to record. I have further comments and I'll make comments at this time. At this time, I have not been able to record this meeting. I oppose this, um, change. I believe the hotel of such height is not within the character of our city. Uh, 65 feet is unusually tall. And no building is of this height. And by saying no to this, you say no to all the ones that are going to come behind it, no doubt. People will make additional arguments that, uh, we should have, um, taller buildings. I'm very concerned and I don't see anything in the zoning ordinance that addresses things such as noise, light pollution, um, and other ill effects of, of, of a hotel of, of this size and density. Uh, it concerns me that, um, there's a potential for a lot of noise to propagate for balconies at height and balconies are in fact encouraged. I also have some further comments regarding, um, you know, the viability of the hotel zoning. Uh, there was a hotel behind, um, Safeway. Uh, why did it fail? Um, are there risks of, um, blight as a result of, uh, failure of this hotel? Uh, the city's past plan of, um, the outlet mall itself, um, is, appears to be in question. It is also a source of blight and has been in trouble. So I'm very troubled by, you know, many of the arguments that have been given to, um, enable, uh, to press for the approval of this hotel. The city's track record on economic development is quite poor. The past hotel obviously didn't develop, nor did it have the outlet mall in terms of it's not, not been a stellar success. I'm quite, quite troubled, uh, quite troubled by this. Also, the environmental demands of such a hotel on sewer and, um, water. Uh, hotels are some of the highest water consumption, um, entities that are out there. And, uh, frankly, you know, there's other negative impacts regarding water such as groundwater and, uh, and aspects of the hotel. So I feel that, um, this really needs, it really needs additional study. And I think, uh, the citizens might, might be more supportive of a lower height hotel. I didn't see tremendous opposition to the first, to the first one behind, uh, the existing one. So I hope that council would take a moment and others to take a moment to explain, uh, why did that one fail? Um, and is, is there really, is there really a case, a case for this hotel? And, uh, and again, um, uh, please consider a lower height. Thank you very much. Bye. This was my comment.
Thank you. Um, Don, for your call on the next person, I want to remind folks on the call public that the chat box is strictly or indicating if you're looking to speak to an item, it is not our general conversation. Please refrain from those comments. We are recording this meeting as we do all meetings and the recording is available, uh, generally the day after the meeting on the city's website. Uh, do we have anyone else looking to speak?
We do. Steve Raponich, I apologize if that was not the correct, um, pronunciation of your name. You have three minutes. Please unmute yourself.
Steve Raponich, and I live at 394 Merritt Place Northeast. And I just, uh, completely agree with everything that Mike Thomas has, uh, commented on. Um, I really don't have anything to add, just, uh, he's, he said everything that I wanted to say. So I hope that the, the council will, will take those, uh, comments and, uh, and reconsider, um, their decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff Kruger, please unmute yourself. You have three minutes. Jeff?
Jeffrey.
Yourself.
Can see you there, Jeff, but you're still muted. There you are.
Apologies. Okay. Um, yeah, I agree with what the last two.
Uh, Jeff could-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Jeff Kruger, 12709457 Avenue Southeast.
Thank you.
Um, I agree with the comments from the other people. I guess my concern is in talking with many people out here, you know, the, I, the council needs to understand a lot of the citizens with all the energy invested in the water plan and everything else, it just feel beat down. Um, a lot of them said they would attend the meeting, but I don't see them here. I think they figured that their voice really doesn't matter anymore, which is kind of sad, given the character of North Bend. But that said, it's just hard to understand how this even made it out past the zoning committee. I understand that if somebody says we're only going to build if we can go this high, then it's kind of, if you want a hotel, that's what you get. I don't think that that is a, a reasonable and viable option. We don't have any other structures in our town up here in the upper part of the valley that are of this height. When we allow one to get built, how many more will follow? Why did we pick 75 or 65 feet? Why not? You know, why not go 100 feet? Why not go 200 feet? At what point do we say tall is too tall? In my 22 years here, just in North Bend and 50 some odd here on the east side, the only thing that really has generated a lot of controversy as far as all these developments go outside of the development themselves and the water usage is the height of these things. And you know, from the quote mule pasture, uh, development that the three stories was problematic and that, you know, drew a lot of ire from a lot of people. Now we're talking, you know, more than double that. Where else in town are we going to start to allow six, seven, eight story buildings? Whether they're apartments or, or condominiums or hotels or whatever else it might be. I think this is a real slippery slope and it's so out of character with North Bend. My concern to the council and comment to the council is at what point do we just say, we're just going to build this place out, we're topping down all the trees and whatever height we have is whatever height we have. Once the character of the town is gone, it's gone. And when we start getting structures like this, it's, it's just a slippery slope. I, I would hope that the council might take some time to at least ask, you know, have the citizens weighed in? You guys did a survey a while back, asking about growth in the city and stuff. This is such a tremendously important issue for the citizenry. I'm not sure why the council or why the planning commission did not send out a survey specifically regarding this hotel and the height limits. I think that that would have been prudent. You would have, whether you liked the comments or not, at least we could have got a good, solid understanding of where the citizens, you know, feelings lie. Thank you.
Thank you. Don, are you with me?
Yes, there is no more comments.
More comments. All right. Thank you very much. Uh, let's see, hotel committee, give me a reminder here where this comes through.
CED.
CED. Thank you very much, Ms. Miller. I believe it is then you.
Yeah, um, you know, I really, I, I'm going to make the motion tonight. I appreciate everybody's comments, however, and I do think on a side note, um, it is prudent for people to understand um, exactly what didn't occur with that former hotel in that location. I think there's a lot surrounding that conversation that the public should, should hopefully hear about at some point. I would want that. So going forward, I'd like to put forward a motion to approve. I would want that. So going forward, I'd like to put forward a motion to approve. All right, motion to approve A B two one dash one forty-four. An ordinance amending the rows and N B M C table eighteen dot ten dot oh five oh, setting forth performance standards for commercial land use type two point one six hotel and motel as a final reading.
And a second? Second, Jonathan, I think you see your hand. Thank you. A motion by Ms. Miller and a second by Mr. Rosen. Ms. Miller, did you want to speak further to the motion?
I think we've, you know what, this is a very hot subject matter for sure. And I know we've had a lot of conversation with regard to the very infinitesimal in, information that we go forward with, but this is one hotel potentially. It's not a done deal, but the, the, it's all in the wording and I for one don't want to see us do it wrong for sure. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Mr. Rosen, you were the second?
Sure. Um, I know there's some concerns out there. Clearly, some of the citizens here tonight have expressed those. This council, I will say, spent a lot of time on this particular agenda item. And there were a lot of proposals in front of us. Most of them involve more than one hotel and heights even higher than this. And the council certainly understands those concerns and that's why we ended up at where we are with one hotel, one location at sixty-five feet to see how that works. And I believe where this will ultimately be decided will probably be one of the places where it will be the least amount of impact to our community, especially on the view shed. Uh, we spent a lot of time looking at this, as Heather brought up, also talking about landscaping and all these things have gone into it. And this is how we, this is where we ended up. I, I feel it is a good opportunity for the community to have this hotel ultimately built. And I think we've lessened the impact as much as possible. And I hope that this turns out to be something that we all are proud of and a gem, because I think at the end of the day, we certainly needed a hotel here. And I think this will be a successful one, but we certainly, we understand those concerns and we, we talked about it at length and hopefully we got it right. And I think we did.
Yeah. Mr. Garcia.
Well, since this is my last meeting, I'm just going to just let it, let her fly. So let's talk a little bit about that previous hotel, private business. They decided to not move forward. The city doesn't have a track record of negligence or anything here. It, it was a business decision, which hey, quite frankly, would have preferred to see that hotel. It should have already been done. Right? But the city didn't do anything to discourage that. Uh, there were some permit issues with Wash Dot that took time. The people pulled the plug and left. And I believe, and here's where I'm going to just let it fly, I believe they've lost their concurrency.
They have.
Okay, so we're taking, I don't know if it's an apples to apples, but it's pretty close. We're taking the water that was reserved for that hotel and now it's across the street. So I, I don't, I don't, you know, the characterization that this is uh, as cities' track record of not being able to get a hotel is, no, that's not on the city. That's on the private developer who choose, chooses what they want to do with their money. The height on this is five stories and the top story is probably two thirds of a story of a restaurant and banquet rooms. So we're hoping that that will, will ease the, the look of this. Um, I, I just hope that, uh, we continue to elect people that will stick to that, that this is probably a one and done on this height and, and roll with that. You know, we, we could, we can only govern while we're here and the future is up to the future. Council's what they decide to do. So hopefully that addresses some of the concerns. We too are concerned about the condition of the outlet mall. Um, and this is hopefully a way for them to drum, drum up some more business and to reinvest into the mall. That's what we're hoping for. There's already some more higher end stores out there and that's going to, that's going to feed into, to this and and hopefully we get that re, mall redevelopment. But to say that that mall is, has been bad, I mean, that mall's been out there for, I don't know, forty, thirty-five years. Right? I remember coming home from college one day and all of a sudden, geez, there's a McDonald's in a mall in the field. They used to have the circus, right? So I mean, to, to characterize this as that was a bad decision, I, I, I mean, the folks, that's a, that's a little bit of a distraction. These are, the city isn't sponsoring or funding these, these businesses. These are private businesses and private businesses do what private businesses do. And the city can only encourage them. I feel like our staff worked very hard and the council, especially the C E D meeting, and they came to what we hopefully will look like a quality item. But this hotel will be nice and maintained and that's what we're shooting for.
Thank you. Any other council member wish to comment? Seeing none, motion before you is to approve A B twenty-one dash one four four. An ordinance amending the rows in North Bend Municipal Code Table eighteen dot ten dot oh five oh, setting forth performance standards for commercial land use type two point one six hotel and motel as a final reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries and it is unanimous. Thank you very much, council. Uh, next on our agenda, item number seventeen, A B twenty-one dash one four five. This is a public hearing continuance on ordinance adopting the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two mid biennium budget modification. Ms. Masco.
Thank you. You have before you for second reading and adoption this evening, the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two mid biennial modification ordinance. There have been no substant, substantive changes since first reading back in November. Um, just a few highlights is it does incorporate the property tax decision made by the council in November of the one percent and the bank capacity. Um, it changes the beginning fund balances for twenty twenty-two to be in alignment with the fourth quarter budget adjustment that was just passed on the consent agenda this evening, so that everything is balanced. It maintains the conservative revenue projections that we've always maintained. It does include the decision cards for the first time since twenty nineteen. Um, and it maintains a structurally balanced budget and maintains and exceeds the fund balance requirements that the city council has set forth um, in previous meetings. Um, and then just on a good note, the general fund anticipated ending fund balance for twenty twenty-two is actually a little over nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars higher. So a little less than a million dollars higher than what was originally adopted when you adopted the twenty-one, twenty-two um, mid biennial budget. So that is a good news story. And I would anticipate that as we move forward into twenty twenty-two um, and we align the revenue, sales tax revenues and some of the other business revenues that we will see that number go up even higher. So that's kind of the highlights. All of the details are in the agenda bill and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, as we are still in a, a public hearing, I will move to the public first before we ask for the introduction of the motion, so that we may close out the public hearing portion. So if there is any member of the public who wishes to make comment on this agenda item, please indicate in the chat box or by star nine on your phone. And we'll call upon you. At that time, you'll state name and address for the record and you'll have up to three minutes.
I'm not seeing anybody.
Okay, thank you. Um, this is Finance Administration, Mr. Godell.
Thank you. Motion to approve A B twenty-one dash one forty-five, an ordinance amending the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two biennial budget, adopting the twenty twenty salary schedule as a first and final reading.
Second?
Second by Mr. Rosen, motion by Mr. Godell. Mr. Godell?
Again, another balanced budget. Um, this is, you know, basically housekeeping ordinance. Um, the only thing I'm not happy with is property tax increase, but I made that point made when we voted. Other than that, I support the adoption of this, uh, this motion.
Thank you. Mr. Rosen?
Yeah, I'll echo some of what Alan just said. Um, this is overall a fantastic budget. I think, uh, like all of us, we don't always get everything we want and there's always some compromises, uh, property tax being one of them. But overall, the, I think Ms. Masco has done a great job putting this together. I thank you. And this is a solid foundation we have here and I look forward to moving forward with this tonight.
Thank you very much. And, uh, excuse me, Mr. Garcia, before I call upon you, I did overlook that, uh, closing the public hearing before we move to the motion. So we will formally close the public hearing at seven forty-one. Thank you for the reminder.
Do we need to reread the motion?
I don't see a need for that.
I didn't know what the process was. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia, to you.
Well, I won't mention property tax, so there's that. I just want to thank, uh, the staff uh, and Finance Department in particular, uh, I will, they did a great job on this budget as usual. I'm a little upset, but I get to spend more of this money on my way out the door on some infrastructure improvements. So Regus, you keep mentioning these guys that fix some sidewalks, pave my trail, fix some roads, underground some lines. Appreciate it. Appreciate everybody's hard work that pitched in on this.
Thank you. Mr. Loudback?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to say, uh, in support of Mr. Garcia, Ms. Masco, an excellent job. You can finally get some sleep uh, after this long process. And as for Mark Regos taking some of the money next year and possibly paving Garcia away, we'll have to talk about that in Transportation Public Works.
Get her done, Madenbach, get her done.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, we will conclude with yes, it is a fantastic story. The, the revenue picture is so much better than it was um, about two years ago when we entered office and what we were looking at. And, uh, our worst fears thankfully were not realized. It's a good, strong budget. The work coming out of Finance Department and particularly Don's work is always astounding. And I, I fear she's not going to get any rest, but at least this part's put away for a little while. So with that, motion before you is to approve A B twenty-one dash one four five. An ordinance amending the twenty-one, twenty-two biennial budget and adopting the twenty twenty-two salary schedule as a final reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries and it is unanimous. Thank you very much. Uh, next final item on our regular agenda, since we modified, is item number eighteen, A B dash twenty-one dash, uh, dash one four six. Motion authorizing administrative services study. Uh, this is Mr. Miller listed on the agenda. This is also the mayor's request as the chief of the administration. Uh, Mr. Miller, if you wanted to make any comments, please do, and I'd be happy to add to them.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, make sure everything's working right. The mute's off. Great. Um, the mirrored administration, as we say in our summary statement, propose a contract to examine the efficiency and organization of internal services to address several administrative services, finance, human resources, technology, staffing. This will also involve coordination with the clerks department and some of the front desk services that are offered. The objective is to have a series of recommendations for improvement in one summary report. Several seasoned professionals that have worked for several cities in the state of Washington will participate under the direction of Greg Prothman, working through a consultant contract with the Greg Prothman Company. The amount of the contract is not to exceed sixteen thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. Uh, Mayor, if you want to make further comments, nine here is a resource.
Yeah, let me just, we had a very good discussion at the Finance and Administration meeting. And I just wanted to summarize that from my perspective. Over the last two years, we've done some analysis and some, uh, reorganization, resetting within the Public Works Department and in the Community and Economic Development Group. And I feel that both of those are working very well and we came out of those very well and we're humming. Um, a lot of things are getting accomplished for, for the good of our citizenry. This is one area that I did not anticipate, um, making a, 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 um, decision such as this quite as quickly. But the, the situation has presented itself because we have a couple of significant vacancies, particularly in finance. And when we look at what, uh, one person can accomplish, as amazing as Don is, um, we, we need some help there. And this is, that's what's making this a very timely issue and in front of you this evening. Uh, we have a variety of initiatives which are dragging or stalled because we just don't have that bandwidth. That's the number one reason is pushing this forward tonight. And for this group, it is my request, uh, to get some outside professional insight and recommendation based on the experience of professionals in the field and their knowledge of how other similar cities organize certain functions such as I T, H R, uh, as well as the finance grouping overall to deliver the best services to our citizens that we can. Uh, in light of, in, in light of the current situation, I'm looking to move forward on that immediately so that we can better um, of accomplish what we need to do and fill positions and get back right sized. That's, uh, my basic overview. With that, uh, we will ask for any clarifying questions before I go to public comment. Seeing none, if you're a member of the public and wish to speak on this item, please indicate in the chat box or by star nine on your phone. We will call upon you.
I got a quick question, Rob, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rare. Um, how many staff are we looking to add potentially here? Do we have a number yet?
There's, there's no expectation of adding any staff that are not already approved.
Okay.
If something came out of the study recommending that, I would look at that, evaluate whether I thought that was the appropriate thing to do. And if there was a position added, that would come back to council.
Okay, thank you.
Don, do we have anyone looking to speak on this item?
We do not.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Godell, Finance Administration, if you could get a motion on the table for us to discuss.
Motion to approve A B twenty-one dash one forty-six authorizing contract with Greg Prothman Company for internal services organization and management review in the form content acceptable to the city attorney and the amount not to exceed sixteen thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars.
Second?
Uh, motion, Mr. Godell, second by Mr. Rosen. Mr. Godell, I know you have some comment to this.
Yeah, I'm going to characterize the finance meeting a little different. We came out of that meeting with a basically two to one, um, not happy with the way this has been presented. This came in a process without following a process and brought to a committee at a time, uh, at the same time that it was being presented at council. I have a lot of concerns with it. One, I have asked that we see some other studies and recommendations from other companies or at least what they've done in other cities. The Prothman Group is mainly a recruiting group. Um, and I don't see this as something that's going to provide what we originally intended. One of the things was to talk about this from our perspective, looking at who's on the bus and make sure we have the right people in the right places. Yes, we know C E D is going away, Public Works, but we all talked about whether we have the right people in this. This will not address it. This will target just one area of this, this. And I have a concern that yet I haven't seen any other, any, you know, any other example of Prothman doing this or any example where we can talk to another city that it has is done by Prothman. So I have a lot of issues with this, the way this has gone down. So I have a lot of issues with this, the way this has gone down. So I will not be in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosen. You were the second.
Yeah, um, I'll second that I'm not in favor of this. Um, I've said this earlier today, I'll say it again. This feels very targeted at one department as Alan alluded to. Uh, and I'd like to see a much broader review. I think that's in our, all of our best interest. And unfortunately, the way this was brought about by coming in front of the committee today and having to be voted on tonight, we were denied that opportunity to tweak this and to make some amendments and changes to get something better forward. So because of that, we cannot broaden the scope of this tonight. It was basically vote on this as is or not. And the committee talked about making changes to this, but as I said, those opportunities really are not in front of us because of the sequence of the timing of this. And that's part of the other reason why I'm opposed to this. So for those two reasons, I cannot support this tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Elwin.
Thank you. Yes, I'm the other member in the committee. Um, my, my purview or my point of view on this is that I think it should be expanded to be more of a broader organizational sweep. Um, my, my reason for supporting it being brought forward for council discussion is trusting that um, the mayor who's leading the organization says that he has desperate need to start filling this now. Um, I appreciate both of my colleagues' uh, points of view. In fact, that's what was a hard thing for me because I understand the pressure bringing it to us and then making us decide it at a, at a council meeting I don't, I don't like, I don't appreciate. I'm just trusting that the urgency is there. The other piece too, though, that uh, Mr. Gothel has brought up, which is a valid one, is understanding um, this particular agency and what their expertise is and what are the other case studies or other examples that we can glean from to understand if they are indeed the right um, agency for this type of work. My position was that this is maybe a little, I'm getting a little bit out of our lane. Uh, being elected official, being city council and getting into staffing issues. Um, so again, I'm just trusting that the Greg Prothman Company was selected by the mayor for, for reasonable reasons. That doesn't mean to say that I disagree with my colleagues because they both bring up valid points that I do support. So that's why we are here today in a, in a kind of a, not a unanimous decision, but what we wanted to do was bring our con, our concerns to the rest of the council to have you all weigh in on it. Um, but so that you can understand the full context of our discussion about this. But again, my, my point is I think the scope should be broadened uh, beyond just uh, where it is now.
You. The other council member, uh, Ms. Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too stand to hope that this would have been broadened further and, and I'll stick with that.
Thank you, Ms. Cullen.
Yeah, I agree with the, having the committee meeting the day of the council meeting is not appropriate. It should have been talked about and then we know what that committee is thinking before it's brought to a meeting. It should have been brought up at the next meeting, not this meeting.
I, I agree with Heather as well, I might add.
Thank you. Before I move forward to other council members, I'll address those. There, it was due to the urgency. So the two, two issues that being brought up here, one is the process. Yes, and I agree as I explained to the committee and I've uh, always supported council and it's a, and it's um, look to take the time to consider uh, things uh, at the committee level before they move uh, to full council in not the same day. Uh, there are instances in which we do need to move quickly. And this regard, I feel there is a great deal of pressure because of the uh, difficulty that we are experiencing and a very much of a need to move quickly, or I would never have brought it forward. That is also the answer for why um, Greg Proffin was the only consultant that I did seek the proposal from. I took counsel from a lot of people that I trust and got a strong recommendation for, from them on uh, the uh, viability and the qualifications of this firm to do the work. They came highly recommended. And so I chose the firm that would do the work versus looking at doing a broader R F P that would take much more time and, and do that uh, delay. As I expressed to the committee today, this was a very timely manner, or I would not have brought it forth in that matter. Without moving forward expeditiously, I feel we're, we're um, at risk. And that's the best I can say in regard to our ability, my ability and my city administrator's ability to best govern the city and deliver services. I'm looking for insight in this one area. I am open to the idea of expanding the scope. Um, uh, after we get this portion moving forward and I expressed to the committee, I'd be happy to reach back out. Um, both for case studies, as Mr. God Health had mentioned, I did not seek those out or deliver those to the committee. Um, and again, in a timely manner. Um, and we can do that as well as uh, ask for additional scope for a potential amendment uh, consideration to this original contract. Again, I feel that I did not come forward with that initially because I feel that um, Public Works and the Community Economic Development Groups are functioning well. Uh, and knowing council's general sensitivity to spending dollars on consultants, I tried to keep it very tight to what I needed. Anyone else? Okay, yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Loudonback, almost missed you.
That's all right. Not much to, not much to miss. Uh, the I think, I think we can all appreciate the desire for uh, an encompassing study. I think the dollars set aside or suggested for this particular piece of legislation would be better spent in the act of recruiting of positions that we know we're going to want to fill regardless of whatever the consultants come back with in terms of an organization. There's no way that we can continue to uh, uh, add to the stress of the uh, the Finance Department without having additional qualified professionals to assist in that area. And I think their recruitment would be the priority immediately. And then maybe sometime uh, first quarter of next year, we could look at a comprehensive study after the committee's had an opportunity to review what's going on. But yeah, I'm not disagreeing that it might be something and that there is urgency. But I think that we also know that structurally, the urgency uh, lies in the recruitment of the uh, of, of the individuals that we need in finance immediately. And then after that, uh, if you want to explore, um, you know, I T and, and some of the other stuff or branching out with H R, whatever. But I think the immediacy is, is I, we certainly, I think everybody here shares the knowledge or shares the recognition that um, we need to get some help uh, over there in finance. And uh, it would be uh, incumbent upon us to really move to get those positions filled first and then take a look at a comprehensive study for the additional, uh, the additional functions. That's just my two cents.
Anyone else? It is a legislative priority to turn down the administration's request. That's what I'm hearing so far. So if there's no other, I will go to the motion. Motion before you is to approve A B twenty-one dash one four six authorizing a contract with Greg Prothman Company for internal services organization and management review in a form and content acceptable to the city attorney in an amount not to exceed sixteen thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Great. Those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion fails. Do I have any abstentions? Did I miss anyone voting for? Mr. Garcia, I'm not sure which, which way you were voting.
I was voting, I was just gonna abstain.
Abstain? Thank you. Ms. Miller, you were voting against?
Against, yes.
Aye. If I read that correctly, we have six against, one abstention, motion fails. Thank you very much. And that is the last uh, agenda item of the evening. On the main agenda, we will be moving to Mayor Council and Administrator Concerns and Initiatives. I'm going to use the uh, mayor's prerogative as the chair of this meeting to do a little bit of a different order of things this evening as we close out. Um, I'm gonna, I've got a few comments and then I want to call on um, not only the council members, but also most of the staff, as was um, mentioned earlier. Uh, and I'll also end the meeting with, uh, this is probably the last uh, meeting of the year. So kind of a year-end wrap-up and therefore also Mr. Garcia's last uh, council meeting. Uh, regular council meeting. We do have a joint work study tomorrow night. I'll remind council members with um, the Snoqualmie Valley School District Board. So first, using my prerogative, um, okay, I want to talk about Chris Garcia. And what do we say about Chris? And what can we say really? I mean, in a public forum, that is.
Right, remember you're, you're big recorded, right?
I am being recorded and it is public forum and so I have to be very, very careful in that regard. Um, but setting aside that inclination to poke fun or to tell Chris stories, as I'm counting on others to do that. Here's some things that came to my mind as I thought about this being his last regular meeting as a sitting council member. Mr. Community. I don't know when I first met Chris. We both assume it was related to the Chamber of Commerce and our work with them. I do remember that I was hearing about him and what a great person he was, how much he cared about our community and how much he gave of himself for North Bend. It's proved to be true through my twenty-some year association with him. And I know that he is continually engaged with our community to keep a pulse on what's going on, what's important to different people and what they are thinking about the city. He is almost surely the most respected and adored council member by the city staff. This past week, at the request of that staff, we held a little going-away social for him. Almost every staff member came to wish him well in this send-off. And that sends, says a lot. I mean, you know, if we were to organize this for, say, Rosen, I'd have to pay people to show up. So, take that for the way it is. Thanks, Jonathan, for being the butt of that joke. Chris has been an invaluable service to me in our community. Whether conversations as I was chairing the Planning Commission, to encouraging me to run for mayor, a thought that he's now regretting, I'm sure, to working closely with me during these past two years, to plan, to share and to make decisions that are the best for our community. Especially this year as pro tem. He has shown it's about what we can do for our community. He brings to me the individual and collective thoughts of the council members. And while he shares his personal views, he is always, always quick to emphasize where his personal desires are not necessarily in line with that of other council or more importantly, what he thinks is ultimately best for the community or what the community at large supports. That's a quality that seems more rare in elected officials today. What describes Chris? Words. Balanced, active listener, reasoned and reasonable. Doesn't make it personal, always what's best for the community, consistent. Well, we need to test that last one. Chris has served for over ten of the past twenty years on council. Through that time, he has gone away a few times saying, I'm done. So not knowing how long this hiatus might actually stick, I planned appropriately and I awarded him a special plaque in recognition of his service to us. I want to be sure that everybody gets a chance to see this plaque because I foolishly handed it to him and let him walk away with it. I give you a moment to see if you can read the uh, the uh, boxes there. Councilmember Chris Garcia, my friend, thank you for your service. Thank you for the little pokes you allow me. I don't think it's the last we will see from you. I am in fear, as Mr. God Health mentioned uh, uh, last week, that we might get more calls and visits from you out of office than even we did during office. But we know you'll be a member of the community and I appreciate it. And I wanted to get out in front of that. Um, uh, I'm gonna kind of just go across my screen here and you're not going to get to speak for a while. Um, Mr. Loudonback, you have anything you'd like to say in closing this evening?
Well, certainly we had a, a, a great send-off at City Hall for Chris. Uh, he's a special individual, somebody I've enjoyed working with uh, professionally and, and privately. Uh, I don't think that there's a uh, more generous giving human being in this community that I've ever met. Uh, Chris is uh, the instigator of the Get Her Done Committee and Transportation Public Works. Um, Chris is a man of action. When he sets his mind to a task, he accomplishes it, or at least he gives it its very best. And uh, I'm proud to say I count Chris as a friend and I really uh, I'm gonna miss him on the council, but I'm not gonna miss him because I'm gonna see him around town because Chris is uh, omnipresent in North Bend. He uh, is a businessman, a father, a husband, and a, a real great example of uh, what it means to be a quality human being here in, in North Bend and God bless you, Chris, and we're gonna, we're gonna support you in what, whatever future endeavors you take on. And I have an inkling I know what some of them are. So I look forward to seeing you there. Take care.
Thank you. Mr. God Health.
Yeah, I've got two things. I'm gonna hold off and then I'll make my comments about Chris, but I wanted to point out one thing that was on the consent agenda that's kind of exciting. I don't know if you guys noticed that we had an ordinance today authorizing the redemption of a portion that cities tax general obligations for the fire station. We retired that early. This was a passion of mine when uh, Mr. Garcia dragged me into this council, starting with the Planning Commission, to build that fire station. And it's very nice to see that we built it and we're retiring the debt early. So just want to give this admin, you know, the administration, the staff and everybody that's worked very hard to A, get this built and B, get this paid off. So congratulations to all. Um, we all deserve a round of applause for that one. As for Chris, Chris dragged me in there as we talked about. I remember the first conversation, meeting we had at the old pizza place with him and Jonathan trying to convince me to get on the Planning Commission. Um, and it's been downhill since. Um, I've remembered all the times he's been on. I actually replaced Chris uh, for his council position. And with so, he, he realized that I was an air he could continue to job when he didn't like something that was going out of the council. So just like uh, the mayor said, I expect to hear more from him. I'm hoping to hear more uh, rousing conversations like we had, what, about two, three, about three, four years ago at the uh, uh, city uh, um, the city.
Block party.
Pardon?
Block party.
The block party, yeah. Where he chewed my ear off about, you know, what downtown looked like and what was truly downtown. And all the information provided was definitely passionate and, you know, well thought out. And of agreement with, with Rob, um, he's a person who does check the polls of the, the community and understands it. He's willing to step up and say, okay, I agree with it, or I don't agree with it, or I agree with it, but He's willing to step up and say, okay, I agree with it or I don't agree with it or I agree with it, but I'm, you know, the other thing he does is at the end of the day, he doesn't agree with it like all of us in this committee. He works to make sure whatever it is gets instituted properly and is well thought out. So Chris, thank you for your time in the council. Like, uh, the mayor said, we'll see you maybe in four years again.
Ms. Cohen.
Uh, Chris, I'm gonna miss you. I think of you as a mentor now. I look up to you. I appreciate the way that you speak on the council and your insight into our community. I was especially touched at your party when the public works guys were so appreciative to you during the snow of Maggedon and you showed up with pizza and that meant more than them, more to them than anything. And that's just the kind of person you are. And I hope I can in some small way emulate you in the future.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Elwood.
Thank you. Well, Chris, this is, uh, I don't know how to say this. Um, I appreciate you. I really do. Um, coming on, when you came on the council, you had this great reputation and I didn't really know you. Um, but I feel like we were able to bond pretty quick. Uh, you seem like a stand up straight guy saying what you felt, reason, would listen to other people's arguments. Sometimes you change your mind, sometimes you'd hold fast, but you would present logic and reason as to why you were taking the position you were, which is helpful, especially for somebody like me who gets passionate about a thing. Sometimes you need somebody that's just kind of rational to say, hold on a second, think about this. So, so I, so I appreciate the, the humanization and the demeanor that you brought to all of our conversations, the heated ones, even the fun ones. It was great. Um, and you know, the mayor put a pretty good list forward about all these great attributes and I'm only gonna say one thing that I put in the farewell card to you that I thought was, uh, as I was sitting down writing that note, I mean, it just occurred to me, there's one line in, in Shakespeare play that just sticks out to me. It's to thy known self be true. That is a characteristic and quality that it's hard to come by. Especially when you're in a public format and you're having to be put, you know, in front of certain people, pressing your point of view and, and making a decision. I mean, it's really hard. It's challenging. But the principle that you go by, which is to thy known self be true, a self held fast in every, every moment. So it was definitely respectable, commendable. And that's why I appreciate you. I mean, I feel like it's all honest feedback. I don't feel like there's games. It's just really straightforward. Here are the facts. Here's what we need to do. Here's what I think about it. And it's genuine. It's authentic. It's honest. Um, so I'm gonna miss you, but I know I'm not gonna not see you. So it's miss you in this context. My friend. So thank you for all that you do for the community because you really are Mister Community, I think is what somebody called you. But Godspeed, my friend. We'll have a beer very soon.
Thank you, Brandon. I, I was shocked that you, you thought I'd do your Shakespeare once.
Ms. Miller.
Um, I'll go a little farther. I'll call him Mister North Bend because this is, this is, this gentleman here, this fun, loving, humble man, uh, Chris Garcia, born and raised in this area. His wife is, his, her family's still here, I believe. Your family's still living here. Your business is here. Your heart is here. You're, you are, you are truly a compassionate man about community. You're the pay it forward guy. The first one, I swear. You, you are just an incredible human being. I enjoyed getting to know you more. Having this experience with you on council, I admire you endlessly and I'm, I'm kind of gushing. I apologize, but I don't in a way. You mean a lot to me and I know we'll stay in touch. And thank you for everything.
Well, Mr. Rosen, you get to round it out for counsel.
Oh, you're gonna love this one. So here I have this lovely speech. Yes, he did run. But I kind of had all to that after Mr. Garcia's lovely ringing endorsement of my pro tem. It is turn. So Mr. Garcia, I know you'll appreciate this. All I have to say is bye. I love you, buddy. Thank you. Everything.
That's excellent. I'm gonna go a little broader than typical tonight in, in inviting some of the, uh, staff members to comment. I'm even gonna, uh, allow our esteemed city attorney to start. Mr. Canyon, did you have anything you'd like to take a pardoning shot at Mr. Garcia about?
Somebody wake up Canyon.
I'm probably the longest serving member of city government here, even, even more veteran than Garcia. And I gotta say, uh, I'm surprised about all the accolades. I have a completely different view. No, that's, I'm saving that one for when Rosen leaves the council. Chris, I, I, you know, I, I, I just gonna e- echo what everybody else have said, but with a little bit more of a personal touch. You know, I have known you since the early two thousands. You've been a tremendous council member. You're also, I think, an even bigger com- and member and contributor to this community. You're a high character, high integrity guy. And I, I think you have done a lot to make this town better. I thank you, buddy. I, I hope we see you back on this council.
Ms. Masco, anything you'd like to contribute?
Yes, I think I said, um, how I felt at your going away party last week. So, um, thank you for everything. Appreciate the support and good luck and hopefully we'll see you again soon.
Thank you.
Ms. Demming.
Um, I just wanna say thank you for working with you this first year I've been here with North Bend. It's been a pleasure and, um, as everyone said, hope to be working with you again soon.
Uh, Ms. Open doll. You mean, you'd like to say to Chris, like what haven't you signed?
Chris, it's as usual, it's been a pleasure working with you and I hope to work with you again soon. Uh, thank you for your service to the community.
Thank you.
Arigas.
Yeah, let's see, about five years ago, I got the gut punch that, uh, Jean Pedersen was, was heading out the door as our council member moving to Oregon. Um, she was such a wonderful lady and I heard the, the, the replacement was gonna be this guy, Chris Garcia. I'm like, okay, who, who's he? And, uh, I, then I was told, I think probably by Ross or Jonathan, I don't remember. Well, he loves public works. You're gonna love him, Rego. And, uh, he definitely had big shoes to fill with, with Jean because I thought, I think we all thought really highly of her. And that Chris filled those shoes well, very well in five years. Um, definitely agree with a lot of the accolades that were spoken tonight about Chris that, um, is very kind. He's, um, thinks carefully about the issues. Um, he's a really smart dude. I, I, I mean, he's super bright. Um, he's extremely supportive of staff and so staff, uh, really appreciate that about you, Chris. Um, I, I don't think this is a goodbye because we're gonna be in touch, um, certainly. So, um, it's been great working with you.
Yeah. I, I, I believe the captain of the police force may have a warrant to serve. Uh, Nick is your hand up?
It is. Chris, I just wanna say, uh, thank you very much. You've always been a contributor to, uh, and supporter of the police department. And in many ways, even when there's been critical incidents and as before mentioned, snow, uh, you've always been out there to wanna feed us and take care of the people as far as their, their mental and physical state. And I think that that just always rings true in everything that you do, even in the decisions that you make, even tonight, you're, you're thinking compassionately about the citizens, about the employees. And from the police department, I just want to thank you.
Uh, before we move to Mr. Miller, did I miss anyone else in staff who'd like to say something?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Um, Chris, I really appreciate your contribution to, uh, as a council member, as a committee member, and just as someone who would stop by and chat with me and kind of fill me in on where you were coming from. And it, it really helped my understanding of the community. I think you have a pretty deep understanding of the community and I can tell you with great sincerity, I'm glad that Rebecca's here and you won't be bringing another project through me as a community development director because you'll probably do a lot better with Rebecca. But we, we fought our way through that and I think your project is a huge addition to the community. And I think everything we did there was the right thing to do and I'm, I'm glad, I'm glad you did it. Um, I, I don't know if you are, but it was a good, it was a great project. And, uh, I know we'll continue to see you contributing here. And I really appreciate the friendship and I appreciate your, um, kind of warm, personal and thoughtful way that you, you stop by and speak with people. And I really appreciate how you reach out to folks like the public works staff. They really need to know that, that they're supported at the top. And you were very good with all of that. So thank you for your service. I know it took a lot of hours out of your family life. I hope you enjoy the heck out of your family now and have a great Christmas.
Well, before I do, uh, uh, some final comments, uh, of the evening for, for the public, I, I guess we will allow Mr. Garcia as the outgoing pro tem and outgoing council member to have the floor. Okay, Chris, got anything left to say?
Well, I bet I could just make a motion to adjourn, but that's, that's, that's a little premature there. So, uh, I'd just like to say thank you to everybody. Um, I, I appreciate all the comments. Um, I, I hope that, uh, while sometimes I know I, I ruffled some feathers, I, I tried to behave in a manner that was, uh, cordial and understanding and I truly did try to listen to everybody's feelings and thoughts and ideas. And even though sometimes I know I'm a stubborn SOB, um, to the public, I know that not all of you have been thrilled with the way I've voted on some things. Um, but I truly, uh, was able to lay my head down at night, uh, knowing that I felt like I did. Um, what was in the best interest of North Bend as a whole. And, uh, what I thought was the right, right thing to do. Um, staff, I appreciate the heck out of you. Um, you know, you guys make us look good. Uh, council, mayor, love you all, you know, and, uh, here's what I'll say. That, like Mark, you brought up Jean, right? And Alan pointed out that, that, uh, you know, he, he took my spot. If you guys don't leave, I won't come back. Right? So this is your own doing. If you guys stick around, I'm not coming back. So don't leave your spots early and then you won't have to call me. To the citizens of North Bend, it, it has been an honor and a pleasure to serve you. Um, I, 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 uh, hope that, uh, I'll still get to interact with a lot of you and see you out there and, um, I appreciate all the comments and, uh, input that you give, uh, whether we see eye to eye or not. Your, your comments are always heard. Again, don't always agree, but they're always heard. So, uh, I appreciate that. Please continue to let everybody know what you guys think about things. Come to the meetings early. Um, you know, it's like, uh, the hotel tonight, I already saw it. An email that somebody was, was disappointed. Well, I have to say this, at the last meeting, there was a lot more people that came to that that were in favor of the hotel than came today. So sometimes it looks like we're voting in a vacuum, but, but we're really, but we're really, we're not. So um, happy holidays, whatever your celebration is, uh, a peace, uh, restfulness and happiness be in your futures, uh, to everybody. And, uh, I truly love where we live and hope that we can continue to make it a better place uh, for our children and their children to live. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. Great sentiment. Hey, just one, one final clear up, one rumor and, and I need to state one other fact, you know, that it, it is only a rumor that Chris started the pizza business to be able to deliver pizzas to the public work staff and the police department. That's just a fringe benefit of having that. Um, you know, it is a fact, as I understand it, that a former mayor did have to help him get his driver's license because he was so bloody young when he came on to the council originally way back in the time that, that, you know, it's just amazing that he couldn't even drive at the time he was that young.
She was just trying to get me to buy that Camaro.
I, yeah. Figure as much. Okay. For the public at large, uh, if you weren't at holidays on Saturday night, you really missed a special event. I was frankly overwhelmed by the turnout and estimate that we easily had three hundred plus family members who did not let the cold and rain stop them from coming downtown to celebrate and take part in this event. Uh, the number of school age children alone was amazing to see. Thank you all, to all who helped make holidays celebration a huge success. A special thanks is extended to the North Bend Downtown Foundation, Boy Scout Troop four sixty six, Christmas Creek Tree Farm for donating our beautiful noble fir, Tanner Electric for lighting it and PSC for contributing to lighting the remainder of North Bend Way. Also shout out council members Alan Godhealth and Mary Miller and, uh, for their participation for, uh, being emcee during the event. And the following city staff, Bree Kevren, who led this event, put it all together, would not have happened without her. Along with Aaron Mitchell, Don DeBert, Dana McCall, Mike McCarty, Bart Kelly, Max Lee and Derek Osborne, the last three of which were instrumental in getting that tree there as well as serving and taking care of the public needs there all day regarding traffic control. Thank you so much. Truly blessed to live in a town where our residents and staff recognize the importance of volunteerism and giving back to the community. One final plug around holidays, the light up North Bend registration for that contest ends tomorrow, December eighth. Those interested in registering their home or business are encouraged to visit the news section of the city website to fill out a registration form. I can't name the categories, but I was looking at them today. There are several very inventive categories such as, you know, the Griswold Home, uh, the Hollywood Home and some others. You should really take a look at that. It's a pretty cool event. I know it was well received last year. And finally, council, again, as a reminder, tomorrow night, we do have a special work study with, uh, Snoqualmie Valley School District. And finally, uh, the December twenty first council meeting and the December twenty eighth council work study are being canceled at this time unless something urgent comes up. This is the last regular council meeting of the year. Anything else for the good of the order? And if I see or hear not, Mr. Elwood.
Yeah, just one, uh, plug for Valley Center Stage in Salao Grange. Uh, we kicked off a Christmas Carol. There's two weekends left coming up here. Please check it out. Both nonprofits are working together. Uh, hopefully everybody enjoys the show, but it's at the Salao Grange.
Very much. Mr. God help.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo your comments about holidays. It was amazing and it was so much fun to emcee it. I was it, eve- even with the weather and the amount of people there were tremendous. So hopefully we see more next year, but good job to the staff because the work that they do for any of these events is extra and they really put a good show together.
Thank you. Ms. Miller.
Yeah, I'm, I'd like to echo exactly what, uh, Adam, sorry, stumbling over my words here. I wanna echo what you said, Alan, and, um, it was fun to emcee. I was really, um, really appreciative of the new, uh, equipment that we used. The mic was fun to play with that, right? And my crowd, uh, since I went on a little bit earlier, was probably not as full as yours, but certainly they were, um, really resounding and it was just a great time. And I really appreciate all the staff support, all the public works guys that came out and worked hard to make that occur. And there's been downtown foundation and the eight, um, gosh, supportive companies like PSC and I'm gonna, I'm gonna mess up on all these other names, but a whole lot of people went into, um, putting this together and it, and it, I think it worked out really well. So, um, and also I want to add, don't forget to buy local during our holiday season. All the businesses would be very appreciative. And I know that to be true. So happy holidays, everybody.
Thank you. That, all right, um, we'll be entertaining a motion to adjourn. We expect, we'll see you again on January fourth. At this time, we are anticipating that meeting will continue to be remote. Mr. Garcia.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Um, wishing my Mister Garcia second by Mister Loudon back, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed?
Don't call me tonight.
Goodbye, Mister Garcia.
Have a good evening.
DM twenty two.
Thank you all.